Eighteen twenty-two, I'll do attendance. Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Gibner.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Malda Valdez.
Here.
Kevin's here.
Here.
Yep. Malda Valdez.
Here.
McGee, here. McGivern.
Here.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Here.
Puelo. Izzy Rivera.
Here.
Jenny Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Tomlin.
Here.
And Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
So the motion would be to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
For what purpose, Mr. President?
And we, and it would be on your desk, I know there was a little confusion. So it was the intro to the final consent decree, which Attorney Bissonette is here to go over that. And we also have the technical overview from the city engineer, Chris, to give us the update. I know on the bottom, it's talking about funding of that, but that's already been sent to finance. I think they're just trying to incorporate everything.
Ordinance.
It's all interrelated, but I do believe it's really the first two that we're talking about.
So the motion would be to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the consent decree only. And it will be, I'm assuming, no votes taken in executive session?
No votes, no votes.
Second.
And we should be coming out of executive session close to the regular meeting around seven?
Correct.
Second.
So everyone on the same page, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, actually, no, we'll do a roll call to go into executive session, that's what we have to do. So we'll just go in same alphabet or Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Gibner?
Yes.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Malda Valdez?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Counselor Puelo?
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
All right, so we're going into executive session, let's give Scott twenty seconds, he'll come in and tell us that we- Good evening, we'll call to order the full city council meeting for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Gibner?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Malda Valdez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Here.
Puelo?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Aqui.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon? Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
Before we go to the first item, Counselor Tomlin.
Mr. President, make the, take a out-of-order public comment, suspend the rules and take public comment first.
Second.
So a motion is to go out of order, public comment, they're seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, do we have the sheet? One second. Okay. All right. Just quickly, before we go to public comment, there are no interpreters tonight, there was a conflict, but the video will be sent to them and will be posted after they do that, the interpretation. Also, we pulled the name, I did not pull it, someone else did, no names mentioned, but Counselor Jenny Rivera will be voting first tonight. Once again, I did not?
Um, can someone say that in Spanish, that there is no interpreter, so that people that might be listening?
If you want to.
My Spanish.
If you want. Counselor, anyone want to volunteer for that, real quick?
Y queremos dejarle saber que por hoy no tenemos alguien que pueda traducir, pero luego del, del meeting, se va a poner en el website.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, we're at public comment, first on the, for public comment, if you've never done it before, come up to the microphone, your name, full name and address, and it'll be a minute and a half. Around the minute mark, I'll just give you a hi sign, and then we'll go from there. So the first one I have is Ira. And Ira?
Helfand.
Helfand.
Helfand, okay, thank you.
My name is Ira Helfand, I live at three seventy-one Audubon Road in Leeds. I want to thank the council for considering the Back From the Brink Resolution tonight and urge you to adopt it. Sixty years ago tonight, we were living through the Cuban Missile Crisis, the closest we've ever come to nuclear war, until perhaps today, when the danger may be even greater. And it's terribly important that we change course, so that we do not have that kind of a disaster. There's little we can do about the current crisis, but if we're lucky enough to survive this, we need to make sure we're never in this situation again. And that means we need to change fundamentally nuclear policy here in the United States and around the world. If Hoyoke supports this resolution, you will be joining Springfield, Worcester, Boston, seventeen other communities here in Massachusetts, and more than sixty cities and towns across the country. And I thank you very much for considering the resolution, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cecilia.
Thank you, my name is Cecilia Calabrese, I am also the Vice President of the Agawam City Council, I reside at seventy-five Wagon Wheel Drive in Feeding Hills, and I am also here speaking on behalf of the Back From the Brink Resolution. And I want to just talk to you briefly about my dear Uncle Ralph. He was a sergeant, Master Gunnerie Sergeant in the Marine Corps, fought in World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and was on ready call during the Cuban Missile Crisis. He never really spoke about his battlefield experiences as most veterans of war rarely do. But the one thing he would always say is, the one conflict out of all the battles that he had been in, that he feared most for our country was the Cuban Missile Crisis, because he knows if everything went poorly, that we were looking at the decimation of life as we know it. And he was not one given to her hyperbole, so I do hope that you will seriously consider supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, they switched up here, so John Rivera?
Mic check. John Rivera, one hundred and twenty-five Cabot Street in Hoyoke. There's a couple of things that I want to address today. These include the rising sky-high rate, rent rates for many in Hoyoke and also surrounding areas, are therefore meriting a public hearing, I believe the fifty signatures that were attached to the agenda, probably late notice, we grabbed another five in probably yesterday. Also, the death of a worker within Hoyoke at the hands of True Leaf. This also grants a public hearing. You know, this is something that's probably most impactful to a lot of the workers in this unregulated industry, or that should be a little bit more regulated, as well as the, let's see. I think that was pretty much it today. Also, speaking against the racist, classist attempt to limit free speech at city council chambers. You guys have every power to object to this outrageous motion, resolution, whatever it is, by one of our city counselors to suppress our First Amendment right as Americans. I ask you to do such a thing and object to this ridiculous move by one of our city counselors. Thank you, have a good night.
Next is Daniel Rivera, am I saying that right?
Yes, Daniel. Two twenty-six Lyman Street, apartment two L, three seventy-eight Lyman Street as well, I've lived in Hoyoke my whole life. Just want to double down on what my friend John was talking about with the petition. We have submitted one for, to raise awareness for the rising rent costs for Hoyokeans tenants, and the elephant in the room, the conditions of some of these apartments, you know. I'm sure you guys remember last time, you know, we have pests, mice, roaches. Black mold is a huge issue as well that hasn't been addressed, but hopefully with this town hall that we are gathering up, we can start raising awareness and actually start making change for our community. Big step, but if we can all band together as one big group, we can get, make huge change, especially for the fellow tenants here in Hoyoke that are getting the short end of the stick. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Paul.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Paul Mansononi. I'm immediate past Chair of Mercy Hospital, and I'm a tax attorney in Springfield. I'm here to lend my support to the Back From Brink Initiative. And just want to remind everyone, and if everybody remembers Ronald Reagan, he was at odds at the beginning with Mikhail Gorbachev, and by the end of Reagan's term, they all came to the conclusion that a nuclear war cannot be fought. And we need to get back to that kind of negotiation, and this will help heed the call. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Dev.
Hi.
Thanks.
Thanks. Nancy Capron, seventy-two Congress Avenue, apartment one L. And of course, I'm here to support having a town hall on housing. But what I really want us to stop, what I really want us to stop is characterizing Hoyoke's concentration of poverty as something benevolent the city of Hoyoke has done for the poor. I'd rather look at it as a dereliction of duty for those of you in unions and in the workforce in the nineteen seventies and eighties, who allowed our federal government to both deregulate industry and allow our factories here in the north to move to the southern United States, and then outside of our borders in pursuit of the lowest cost employee, leaving the industrial United States ravaged, right? During the exodus of good-paying jobs, our government enacted a war on drugs that had little to do with curbing drug use in the United States and much to do with removing men and women who were displaced, who were displaced from factory work, from public life, and warehousing them
One minute.
in jails, because those workers had a potential to organize against those federal policies. Those people who were not incarcerated or have been released from incarceration sometimes are relegated to lifelong and generational poverty. That Hoyoke is not generously serving. These are the people you failed, and when you speak of our Hoyoke's benevolence to the poor, you're both patronizing and holding a completely inaccurate
We are at our time.
analysis of deindustrialization. All right, I have more, but thanks.
Next, it looks, sorry if I get wrong, Esther Mary, or Sister Mary, maybe Sister Mary now that I look at it.
Sister.
Sister, there we go.
Good evening, my name is Sister Mary Caritas, I'm a sister of Providence, I live at Providence Place, and though I've lived in the city since nineteen sixty-nine, never moved out, I'm still not a Hoyoker because I wasn't born here. My presence here tonight is to ask you to support the resolution prepared by Dr. Ira Helfand. I've known Dr. Helfand for many years, he worked at Mercy, and then he also ran a very fine urgent care center, and he's also a member of the Physicians for Social Responsibility. I forgot to ask him to bring his Nobel Peace Prize, which he carries when I ask him to bring it. But I want you to know that this is not the first time we've come before the city council. We have been to Northampton, the Northampton Council has voted in favor of it. The Springfield City Council has voted in favor, as have many other cities and towns in Massachusetts. Bishop Byrne met with us, and he has approved it. Congressman Richard Neal is willing to be a co-sponsor of a bill that's presently before the House of Representatives in Washington. So I'm just here to validate that I believe that you're looking at something that really has value, and I hope you'll approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nikki Dawson.
Hi, I'm Nikki Dawson, I'm from two twenty-six Lyman Street, apartment three R, Hoyoke, Mass. I stand before you today to support my brothers and sisters for some tenant protections here. I'm way out of my comfort zone, and I'm coming here because this is actually a plea of, please listen to us. We have a hundred thousand disability members who would, who will be homeless if there's not tenant protections set in place. Thanks.
Thank you. That's it for here, anyone online? Spencer Fox Peterson?
Good evening, Hoyoke, it's Spencer Fox Peterson. I am zooming in from fifty-one Portland Street in Ward Six. I'm calling in for a few reasons, mostly to support everybody's fine words regarding classes and poverty, cycle of poverty and foreign drugs, and I co-sign everything that's been said. And yes, we need to deal with rising rent costs, I want, I want to throw my support behind that. And I also want to deal with something that was mentioned by John Rivera earlier, I believe, regarding the First Amendment. We do have a serious issue in this council regarding chilling of the First Amendment. You have an internal document from the planning board, I believe, that has complained about the same issue with venomous language, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not exactly sure of all that, but I have seen that document, and it's alarming. And then to limit people's speech in the sense, as this previous woman mentioned, that she's not comfortable speaking in public. That's a lot of people, not everybody has had training in speaking in public, nor loves doing it. I actually went to a press school, I'm privileged, I learned how to speak to crowds. The reason I'm not there is because I am a laborer and a worker, and I work all day. And I don't get to listen to all the news
We are at one minute.
per se. And, you know, we should be encouraging participation in any means necessary. And saying emailing is a waste of time while spending forty-five minutes complaining about people talking is really confusing to me. And we could just have emails that people don't feel like they're comfortable talking, we could just enter it into the record so people can see the minutes. It's all for public knowledge, it's not for anybody's ego. These are important issues, and I urge you to take the issues of spending money on the police system and stop doing
We are at our time.
that are in poverty. And that's coming from a person that owns their own property. I think we need to take care of our lessers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And that is it for public comment. Next would be Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, Mr. President, if I indulge you one more time, suspend the rules and take item number seventeen C out of order.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up seventeen C out of order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The Committee on Public Service has referred an order that the city council adopt the attached resolution, Back From the Brink, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Tomlin?
Yes, we had a public service meeting last week, we discussed this issue, Back From the Brink, as you heard from several speakers tonight speak eloquently on this issue. I want to make a note that this is a resolution, it's a joint resolution between us, the city council, and Mayor Garcia to send this forward. And as was stated before, several communities within Massachusetts and also within the country have supported this resolution. And I think it's something that this council should really get, stand behind, and also support this and send this to our delegation in the state and the federal government.
Anyone further?
I believe everybody has a copy of it, and if you wanted to read it, we did read it into the record at our public service meeting. If you want to read it, it's up to you.
Anyone further, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Bartley, yeah, we did, the chairman always does a great job, read the entire statement into the record at the meeting, and I think that's probably the best place for it. But in general, it's a well-thought-out, well-written resolution that, I'm proud that we're going to pass this. I'm pretty confident we'll pass it unanimously. I'm very happy that the speakers who were with us last week and tonight have graced us with their presence. You don't have too many housing court judges and physicians, and now, you know, Sister Mary Caritas, and then Nobel Prize, I mean, all sorts of people coming in, we don't get that too often. So it was, it was real, it's really an honor to be even considered for this. And so I for one fully support it, and I look forward to a unanimous vote tonight, thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, the motion would be to receive and adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, thank you for coming down. Next, we go back to one, is there any motion for one, or are we still waiting for stuff on that one?
Waiting.
So, two?
A motion to take item two off the table?
Motion to take item two off the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And?
Is the Committee on Orange has referred, or for zone change from DR to BH for forty-one Templeton, recommend it be adopted, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President, so the motion coming from committee is to pass the first reading?
Second. Motion is to pass the first reading, our discussion, Counselor Bacon?
So we've had the review of this zone change at our previous meeting, and there were some remaining questions, and our administrative assistant sent everybody out the references for the public comments. There had been a question raised about that, and so that was answered. And in the meantime, I think one or more counselors wanted to do some further outreach in the neighborhood. And so here we are. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to gain the information they were seeking, and we'll be able to cast a vote on the matter. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
There's one more piece that was kind of attached to that, and that was with regards to the city solicitor's office and the building department figuring out a situation where this does not have to be handled at the council level. And I still have not heard where that's at.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon?
As a part of the process of the public hearing, that option was raised in the public hearing, and we were given feedback that that was not possible to do.
So, so
Counselor Rivera?
So the last meeting we just met, it sounded like Kathy Deggnan had said that that would be possible if they could prove, or something, right? So there's a way to figure it out? If there's a way that we can move forward with that instead of actually voting on it? Because if we vote on it, I'm going to say no, because I don't want it to become BH overall for the rest of the time. But at the end of the day, if this could be handled inter-office, this does not have to come to us.
So Kathy is online, if there is a motion to
I'll make that motion.
So motion is to allow legal to answer the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So Kathy, did you hear the question from Counselor Rivera?
I did.
Okay.
And good evening, counselors. And I recall from the last council meeting that we had, there was a lot of discussion about the applicants showing proof that they actually had carried on this business historically. And as I indicated then, you know, I had heard from many counselors during the open meeting, on the public hearing, and the applicant himself to indicate that it had been used. So apparently, there's historical background here. And what I indicated the last time is that if that history exists, we didn't have to get to the matter of spot zoning, it had protection under zoning law. With respect to the question from the, regarding the building department, I'm not aware of any information from the building department, so I'm sorry, I can't answer that piece. But, you know, that's, I'm just recapping basically what happened the last time. I hope that answers Counselor Rivera's question.
So, yeah, so if I'm hearing correctly, just to restate it, if, if it sounds like there could be a possibility that they could continue their historic use and use it the way it is now?
Yeah, legally, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's all about the protection that people have, you know.
Necessarily not a reason for us to vote for it to be BH now, because they could still continue operating?
Actually, no, I think that the zoning amendment was applied for because of some problems that the owner had historically. As I recall, he applied for a special permit, and we don't know what happened with that. He was given leave to withdraw, but that never came up again. And that's why you're looking at a zone change. So, you know, I wish I had more background historically, Counselor, to give you, but the documentation just didn't exist.
So I guess, there's two different pieces there that you just mentioned, though. There is us voting for BH so that they could get the zone change, but then there is the prehistoric, non-conforming use. Those are two different pieces, yes or no?
No.
No?
No, they're really not, it's all part of the same question.
So us changing it to BH was still considered prehistoric, non-conforming use?
No, it's, well, no, it's not.
Hold on, let her answer, let her answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor Rivera.
No, no.
No, it really is not, because if you recall, the whole, all this issue came down to spot zoning. I think that's why this application came before you, because for whatever reason, the special permit didn't work out. So this person came, was told to come to you to ask for a zone change. The only reason that the, I talked about, you know, the prior use, is because it does give some protection. But we don't, we really don't have the documentation for me to say affirmatively that that exists. And that's really why you have the zone change application in front of you.
All right, all right, so I guess I'm understanding that the BH zone change would be justifiable because of the prehistoric, non-conforming use?
That's correct, Counselor.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gibner?
Thank you, Mr. President, so along the same lines of a similar question, why can we not grandfather in Mr. Laflamme for pre-existing, non-conforming use?
Because, again, we really didn't have, have the background. I think that's what people, what people are having trouble with, because I understand the question, but, you know, basically, we're going on what we've been told historically. And I think Counselor Rivera asked that the last time, because I indicated, in my opinion, that there wasn't any proof. All we had to go on was people indicating that there was this history. So that's how you can grant the special permit. But, you know, how you ultimately choose to vote is up to you, I would say. But I'm going from a quest for legal opinion, and it was three-pronged, really. And spot zoning was at the end of it. And all I'm saying is that because, under the zoning law, there hasn't, what we've been told, there hasn't been a break, you know, that, that we don't get the spot zoning question. That, that's really what I'm trying to say here. And I don't really know why we have the application in front of us, because we don't have the history to answer it definitively.
Anyone further? Seeing none, some motions to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for the DR to BH.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Malda Valdez?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Ten yeas, three knees.
Your vote, you approve that one?
Mr. President, can we go to number three, please?
Second.
Number three, so communications, this is from the mayor, letter appointing Number three, so Communications, this is from the mayor, a letter appointing Joseph Charles...
Ship that to Public Service, please.
To Public Service.
Thank you.
And that's to the Historic Commission, which will be a three-year term. So to Public Service, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four is...
Four and five as a package, please, Mr. President?
Second.
Spend the rules, take up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Joe, do you want Finance, please, I think?
Finance.
Four is the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2023 appropriations. And then from the auditor also is the year-to-date reports on the general fund and sewer, both to Finance.
Just real quick, Mr. President?
Counsel McGivern.
Just for everybody, if you haven't figured it out, item number four is just the supplemental budget we already voted on, incorporated into a budget, not in print yet, because there may be another supplemental budget coming.
Okay, announcement for that.
But it's...
Okay, announcement for that.
Messenger. This is Messenger, Dave.
All right, so both to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Six is...
Six is to receive, Mr. President?
And adopt.
The minutes from the meeting for October 4th, motion is to receive and adopt. No changes, no questions, no nothing. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven is a petition for...
Ordinance, please.
For Lowell Street, so that's to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight is a petition from the House of Representatives.
Do you want to go to Public Safety or DGR on that?
Public meeting to discuss...
Public Safety.
Public Safety.
Public Safety.
Public Safety, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nine is the Board of Appeals.
Can we take nine, 10, 11, and 12 as a package, please, and ship them to Public Service? They're all my request.
Second. So motion to spend rules, take up nine, 10, 11, and 12 as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nine is the Board of Appeals' public hearing, July 26, August 21, October 28, and November 18. 10 is Board of Appeals' public hearing for Kevin Flynn. 11 is for 53 Roland Street. And 12 is for 555 West Cherry Street. So Counsel Bartley.
Just going forward, I want to thank Mr. Anderson Burgos for turning that right around for us. And then we're going to ship them to Public Service, because we have a candidate, a nominee in there, and we want to just talk about that, as is our right. And then going forward, we're hopeful that we'll receive those minutes, because we've never received them to date in my tenure, that we'll get them going forward for our review. Thank you.
All right, so motion is received, send those to Public Service, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is petitions. This is for a special permit for the Valley Opportunity Council.
That goes to DGR.
So to DGNR, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, President's Report. Let me get my stuff here. First, in City Hall on Halloween, from 10 to 12. City Hall, City Hall Annex, DPW Building at 63 Canal Street. So 10 to 12, there'll be trick-or-treating for Halloween for the kids. Offices who are participating will have signage outside. Jeffrey will have the doors open here for us to participate, so if you wanted to come down, 10 to 12.
What day is that again, Mr. President?
That's the Monday, the 31st.
Just handing out the candy, Pete, you're not getting it.
I might come down with my grandkids, I don't know. I was there a couple of years ago, it was awesome, yeah.
Sunday was the flag raising, as well as recognizing our superintendent, Anthony Soto, for the 2022 Award for Puerto Rican of the Year. The mayor was there, Counsel Anderson Burgos, Counsel McGivern, Counsel Tallman, Counsel Murphy Rombaletti, Counsel Givner. We're all there for that event. We did give Mr. Soto a proclamation because it was a last-minute announcement to us. So if we go out of order to item 24?
Omo.
Omo.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's from myself, ordered at the City Council to give a proclamation to Superintendent Soto for being selected as the Puerto Rican of the Year for 2022. Motion be received and adopted.
Motion be complied with, or received and adopted?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, it came in on a Friday, so there's not much we could do to get it done, but I thank you for that. And Superintendent Soto was very happy, and it's just a great award for him. He's just a phenomenal person. He's doing such a great job for our kids. On the 21st, which I believe it's this Friday, is the Volleyball Hall of Fame, the mayor's reception. I do believe everyone got an email for that, just a simple reminder. November 1st, and this is what Counsel McGivern was talking about. The mayor is going to submit a supplemental budget, November 1st, with some updates in order to get ready for tax classification. November 9th, I do believe you received the email this morning, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM up at Gary Rome, the Chamber of Commerce is having their power hour to have counselors come up, meet business owners, and discuss and just go over anything. Let's see here. One thing is, we did get a thank-you letter from Patty Welch. Just a note, thank you for, and the DPW for taking care of the sign on Bassett Road. The trimming of it was a super job, and I just wanted to pass along that the DPW did a phenomenal job. That is Patricia Welch, which would be Dave Welch's wife, former David Welch right here. And finally, oh no, two more things, laptops, Jeffrey, laptops are in, we, I get it for the council?
They need to speak to know this, and the IT company needs to get them set up.
All right, so everyone on that, if you want your laptop. And then finally, for Counselor Rivera and myself, the update is complete. The Yankees will be advancing, five to one, they won, they will be advancing, just pointing that out. That's all I have for my updates. Anyone?
You gotta say Jenny Rivera on that, bro.
What, what? Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, soon we'll talk about the Jets, maybe, too, one day.
I'd love to talk about the Jets.
What, I just want to point out that on the 27th, I got recruited by Ed Case, and I'm going to staff a table at Morgan School from 5:00 to 7:00, I think, is what it is. And we're going to have a city council table for students to have trick-or-treating there as well. And I think I recruited a couple of counselors, but if there's anyone else, you can just, you can contact me or just show up, or contact Eddie, but I said Morgan, on the 27th, which I think is next Thursday at 5:00 o'clock. And again, Jeff's going to help us out with that. He's going to bring down the city council banner. Thanks.
And don't show up without candy.
That's a little housekeeping. Anyone further? Seeing none, that's the updates on the President's Report. Now we are off to reports of committee, which then would be 15A. Command of Finance is referred in order from the mayor, electing ambulance company, waiting disposition.
Make a motion to receive and adopt the committee report that the...
Second. Motion to receive, adopt. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met with the mayor, our fire chief, last night, and had a discussion about the new ambulance contract. Lot of good input and a lot of good answers for our questions. The mayor, Mayor Garcia, decided that, and he's doing this for a lot of professional services, all he doesn't have to, it's not a bad idea, to put an RFP out. He put the RFP out. Three companies, three vendors responded to the RFP, one being the current provider, Action, two being Cataldo, who is going to be the new provider, and a third company, which since has pulled out their response to the RFP itself and pulled themselves out of the running. The mayor of the city chose Cataldo after a committee met, which included a representative from Hoyoc Medical, the fire department, the companies themselves, the mayor's office, and so forth. They chose Cataldo, it's not a finance thing so much as it is the services that provided by the ambulance is so important to the citizens of Hoyoc. Essentially, what we learned is that Cataldo had the better or more stable proposal. They will be placing five total vehicles within the city, three are ALSs, two are PLSs. They will be, both, one will be stationed at Station 5, which is getting back to pre-COVID when we did have sea ambulances placed around the city in different stations. The rest will be, continue to be at South Street for the time being, which the company will be leasing from the city of Hoyoc, as Action has been up until the transition. We asked a lot of questions. You know, ambulance companies make their money on calls, but they make their money on transportation. And we wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be using these ambulances, vehicles for transportation and come into the situation where we might not have an ambulance available for an emergency call. We also know our firefighters are first responders. We were getting to a point, though, where, especially when the ambulances were housed in the stations, where dispatch would know if an ambulance was going to get to the emergency, you know, quickly, and they did not have to dispatch the attack vehicle or the pumper, you know, from the stations themselves. But they don't hesitate to do that for the purpose of answering the call itself. So we thanked the mayor, we thanked the fire chief, we're just suggesting to the city council that we reviewed the contract, we got the updates, and it's been complied with.
Yeah, it was a very good meeting, as the chairman articulated. A couple of things that I did want to just point out. One is, we don't yet have the selection criteria that was used, so that, you know, we can, we got a verbal report as to the different areas, but we are actually awaiting to hear, like, this was the criteria, this is the scoring, you know, applicant one, applicant two, these were the pros and cons. So it'll be helpful for us to get that, and then we can share that here in this chamber and with our constituents as to why Cataldo was picked over. But what they said verbally made a lot of sense. The other thing I did want to just speak to was, there is, I guess now we're going to be hearing soon, so I won't say too much on it, but I am intrigued about the proposal to talk about potentially selling the Elmwood Fire Station to the successful applicant. This is a three-year contract. And the notion that we would consider selling the fire station, which we converted years ago for the purposes of storing the ambulances to one of the applicants seems on its face an odd decision to make, because of the fact that we may want to change vendors, just like we just just changed vendors right now. But if you were to sell the actual headquarters for the ambulances, wouldn't that give the ambulance company tremendous leverage to maintain themselves in future contracts? Because you couldn't put another ambulance company in a station that they now own. So I'm really intrigued why we're having that discussion. If the building needs capital improvements, then let's have a conversation about capital improvements, no more than if the City Hall roof needed to be fixed, or any other public building needs to be fixed. I'm, that was there, and I think has been a, history has taught us that the Elmwood Fire Station, being the location for these ambulances, one, gave a permanent location. We didn't have people sitting down at Hold Donut with a ambulance or at, you know, different parking lots behind the high school and different sort of... We actually had a place for the ambulance company to operate from, for the ambulance operators to feel comfortable. And we sort of had a permanent home for them, because ambulance service is really a big deal for our constituents. So I'm really trying to keep an open mind, but I'm strategically, I'm trying to understand where this may be coming from. But I'm sure we'll hear more, but that did come out, and I think it's important to the discussion that we raise that point, and that that is also going on here. So, thank you.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, just before I even get to a sale, I got to the meeting a little bit late last night. This body is supposed to approve any lease. So I haven't seen a lease come before us yet. I don't remember if that was requested last night in Finance. I didn't hear it when I was here. But that's something that I would ask the administrative assistant to request from the mayor, and then get that filed to the communication as quick as you can, and then put that to the DGR committee, I guess, to, or Finance, either one, to to review that lease, because that, this, we always do these things backwards, and we back into it constantly, although we did better this year with McKenzie Stadium than we ever have. But I'm hopeful that we can get our act together and get that lease before us. And one of the things that can be very important, that lease, is really to the residents across the street at 485 South Street, who had chronic complaints about the prior vendor. And I certainly want to look at that lease very closely as to the efforts they're going to get, efforts they're going to take to mitigate noise control, among other things. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson Burgos.
I just briefly want to state, so that was an option to sell, but that's not in concrete. That's not 100%.
I just want to clarify that to everyone in the room, that it's just an option.
Spoke to the mayor. I also said it was probably a bad idea. And he agreed, and then we had a few words, and that was it, but it's not concrete, just to be clear.
Counsel Tallman.
Yeah, thank you. It was a great meeting. Our chair always does a great job. I just wanted to state that also on that committee was, along with the mayor and the fire chief, and the gentleman, the individual of the management team from Hoyoc Hospital, was the police chief and the city solicitor. And Counsel Jordan, you brought up some great points. This is something that, you know, doesn't make any sense if we're going to sell the building. And the lease part, I think, if I recall, a few years ago, we had problems with the previous people getting the lease from them, and the money from them on a monthly basis. I believe we finally got it, but I think it took a little while. So I'm looking forward to see what the lease is, what the deal is from this new company.
Anyone further? Counsel Jordan.
Yeah, I did want to just point out, the lease ordinance about the power of this council on approving leases, that was one of the, I had filed an order earlier in the year about updating our Muni code. And I had pointed out that that was one of the ordinances I found missing online. So I hope that everybody's still on the same page. We have an ordinance on the books that leases have to be approved by the city council. So that was adopted a number of years ago, and...
And licenses.
And licenses, yes. So, anywho, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
No one further? So motion is to receive, adopt. That's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, C, and D were not taken out, so E would be next. Command of Finance would defer an order, master general law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. The city council accept the provisions of the municipal road safety program, $35,000, no match.
Motion received, passed first reading?
Received, adopt, passed first reading. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had Sergeant Hart before us. The grant is part of the Police Department. It's been a multi-year grant. Sergeant Hart told us that this particular grant, we buy in three pieces of equipment, two speed, the tractor, I'm sorry, the trailer speed signs that are, you know, mobile and they can be moved around, the total $8,666, being $4,333 a piece. And one data tracker, which was $2,534. The data tracker is going to allow the Police Department to gather data and statistics from a number of things, including these signs. There are three existing speed signs, only two of them are operable. And Sergeant Hart has ensured what the condition is of the third one as far as being fixed, but it's not available at the moment. But this would bring us up to four. He talked about, besides, the rest of the grant will go towards overtime. He highlighted the Main Street corridor as statistically one of the worst traffic corridors within the city. And they're looking to put extra patrols through, use of the balance of the money in overtime hours. He notes that Main Street's not the only area, but it just happens to be the highlight of what they're looking at. The committee recommends, recommend a 5-0 vote to the city council to adopt this acceptance of this grant this evening.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, I just want, just through the chair to the chair, Joe, is he going to send us that report that he gave, all those, the list, the data? Sergeant Hart gave all, Lieutenant Hart gave all the data for the...
Hey.
Didn't we get an email today?
He promised. We got an email today, but I didn't have a chance to read it.
Oh.
I thought we got an email today.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone further? So motion is passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk Callroy voted yes. You're voting for the grant.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
He's out of the room.
Okay. Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Well, the ace.
Your vote, you approve that one.
Good. Suspend the rules and take 15F and 15G as a package.
Let's second that.
Motion to take up 15F and G as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? F is the $100,000 for Greening the Gateway Cities grant, no match. And then G is the Greening the Gateway Partnership, $20,000, no match. Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yoni Golgober was with us, incredible department head, and these are ongoing Greenway, Gateway Cities grants that are, go hand in hand with the efforts of not just our Conservation Department, but the entire state DCR, of planting new trees and getting the canopy and trees across the gateway, especially gateway communities, is what these are geared towards. Yoni told us that what's, this, these, both these grants, the matches, there are no matches, but both of these grants will be used. First part of it is for a number of different remediation things that need to be done with this project. One, tree stumps. There's been a lot of tree stumps left over the years, both through the, this project and prior, where trees were removed, but stumps were not removed. Tree pads, or tree pits, as they call them, which would be for new planting of trees. These pits have to be excavated to a four-foot to eight-foot radius. The goal of the project is to get another 2,400 trees planted, and this, allowing these tree pits to be done upfront, would allow DCR to come in and plant trees. DCR would do that free of cost in the gateway community itself. There's some new trees and some work, labor stuff that is, goes in hand in hand with the, with the grant itself. Yoni was careful to point out that where they do the tree pits, they will do sidewalk modifications, but will make sure the sidewalks are both passable and in good shape when the tree pits are done. The committee recommends that we accept both grants and allow the city to use the funds available.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just, this is unbelievably great news. So I'm really happy what Yoni did for this, and hopefully it'll be expanded. But I certainly want to hear from as many Hoyokers as possible, wherever they are, that, to reach out to us, and so that we can pass along their concerns about certainly tree stumps that have just been clogging up the tree belts. And the tree pits here, they're paved over by mayors, you know, multiple years ago, that just literally asphalted over tree pits for some unknown reason. And so hopeful, I'm hopeful that these will be, this situation be rectified, when you can remove 63 of them and then put in new trees, and that what DCR is, and I know I criticize them a lot for some of the things that they do to the city, but in this case, they're very helpful to the city in terms of getting great staff to come here and to plant all sorts, hundreds, and now went to several thousand trees over the last several years. And we've had Sarah in here and other members of DCR when I was chairing other committees, and they gave us some great updates. And I look forward to hearing from them some more, and hearing from Yoni some more, relative to this new program, to clear out the, clear out the paved over tree pits, to clear out the tree stumps, start planting more new trees. It's going to have such a wonderful effect on our community in so many different ways. Nice thing is, Mr. President, is that this grant can be pretty much used throughout the city. So I'm hopeful that, yeah, we definitely want to hit the downtown, because it's really important, but certainly Elmwood and Oakdale and the Highlands, we got to try to, try to make some headway into those areas, too, because they really need the attention. Thanks.
Anyone further? Motion is, Counsel Rivera?
I just wanted to make a comment about the tree pits. So there are, like Counselor Bartley mentioned, there are a lot that are paved over already. And I don't, I didn't hear them mention that they were going to try to identify some of the ones that were already paved over, to kind of work on those, or were they going to try to possibly build new ones? Which, building new ones is cool, I don't have no issue with it, but it would be cool to see if they could explore going after the ones that we repaved.
That's the plan. That's the plan.
That's the plan. All right. Because the weeds growing out the sides of them is ridiculous.
Yep, that's the plan, Counselor. Yep.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I'll be brief. So, you know, I did mention during the meeting how important it is that we start planting a lot more trees, because if we take a look at all the trees, A, that have come down already, B, the trees that are getting ready to come down, we need to find a way to replenish these, because this affects our air quality, beautification of our city. And let's face it, you know, trees are our friends, right? So I'm looking forward to even more work, more trees. Thank you.
Anyone further? So motion is passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Callroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for both, F and G.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Israel Rivera, yes.
I'm sorry, Israel Rivera.
No worries. It's okay.
Unanimous vote.
We've got to pass those two. H, I, and J, nothing from there. K is the next one. Command Finance referred an order hereby transfer $62,000 from Building Inspector, Property Maintenance Demo to Building Zoning Officer, Building Commissioner, awaiting disposition.
Make a motion to receive, adopt the committee report that we return this order to the auditor.
Let's second that.
To the auditor. So motion is refer K back to the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is from Finance, $10,000 from Pay Local Inspector to other contracted services, awaiting disposition.
Make a motion, receive, pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion is received, pass the first reading and a discussion. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Damian Cody, our building director, was before us. The money is coming from Pay Local Inspector, which is the ongoing saga. There are still vacancies for the listed inspecting positions within the department itself. Therefore, a surplus is created in the line item, this particular line item, of at least $10,000. He's asking to transfer it into contracted services. What he does, he's hired a person, but what he does is he hires individuals who are qualified and pays them per diem to do the inspections which need to be done. Counselor Jordan asked some good questions, and Mr. Cody did inform us that there are fees that are charged, and a lot of the money comes back, even though we're paying a person per diem to perform the duties. We recommend that the transfer be adopted.
Anyone further? Any none? So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk Callroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 15M, Command Finance referred an order for $2,500 from R&amp;M Office Equipment to $1,000, and then $1,500 for System Hardware Employee Training.
Make a motion to receive, pass the first reading.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kelly Curran, our Human Resource Personnel Director, was before us. She identifies some of the reasons for the surplus in the office equipment repair and maintenance, is just the way supplies have come in, and she wasn't 100% sure, because she inherited the budget itself. But she, with the auditor, identified that it's running with a surplus, and therefore she wants to live within her budget. She needs some additional monies for professional services, employee training, which includes herself, and some updates for her own training, but also for employees within the city, and some money for, the $1,500 for the systems hardware, an account that she said is falling short. And she just needs to work with some of the photocopy and toner situations within the department itself. To talking with Ms. Curran, we recommend that the transfer request be adopted.
Anyone further? Motion is passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Callroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for 15M.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. There was no Public Safety, Public Service, 17A. Public Service was referred in order from the mayor, letter appointing Ms. Santiago, 51 Long Meadow, Longwood, they have, to the Library Board of Directors, and that will be expired February 2025. Motion is to receive, adopt, and confirm the appointment. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, I'd like to confirm this appointment. We met with Ms. Santiago last week. She's been in the area for a couple of years, very interested in libraries, actually, a few years back, she would go to the UMass Library, right, David? From 10:00 AM till midnight? I mean, she just about lived in the library. So, and she's been involved in different boards. She's been a development consultant, and worked in HR for a number of years. And she went to the mayor when the mayor called out. They're the lifeblood of citizens of getting involved in politics, and getting involved in these different boards. I think it's, we're elected, but they're the ones that do a lot of this work in these boards. It's very important to have people step up, and she's a great candidate, and just want to really welcome her to this position. And we had a couple of questions for her, a couple of comments, but this is definitely a good appointment by the mayor.
Anyone further? So motion is to receive, adopt, and confirm the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 17B, from Public Service, from the mayor appointing Ms. Rodriguez, 193 Brown Ave, to the Historical Commission, which will expire April 16, 2024. Motion to receive, adopt, and confirm the appointment. Counselor Tomlin.
We met with Ms. Rodriguez last week for this position on this board. She was born in New Jersey. She's a lifelong resident. She's been here a number of years, wanted to get more involved in the city. We asked her about her work situation. She works at River Valley Chiropractic. She's an assistant there for the past few years. Let her know that, you know, it does take time. You're willing to take the time to put in the meetings, and she is willing to do that. Asked her a little bit about her background in the historicals. She really wants to be involved and make some decisions on what buildings are important in the city, and how we can look to the future, trying to save some of the historic buildings in Hoyok.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, this nominee and the prior nominee are very new to Hoyok government, and I just want to make, send a plug just for, to the mayor, and to others that are, that are looking to get involved, that these are really important boards, that we want to hear from the board members, for the most part, and that we want to get as much feedback as we possibly can. And I credited, credited both of them for coming forward, because we know it's not easy to do that, but they both came forward, especially this current nominee. This is going to be her very first position on any kind of a public board. So a real tip of the hat to Ms. Rodriguez, and then a real tip of the hat to Ms. Santiago, of course, and then to any others that want to come forward. We certainly need your input. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motions receive, adopt, confirm the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 17D, Public Service, that the city council receive and adopt the Hoyok Gas Electric Resolution for installing the fifth gas tank for the LNG project. Motion is to receive and adopt. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, this is introduced by our president, Todd A. McGee. We had a discussion on this about the fifth tank a couple of weeks ago in Finance. We had Mr. Lavell in and Mrs. Craven for the discussion. I think one of the gentlemen's from the Gas Division was online on Zoom. And this is something that'll help. We talked to Counsel Jordan, talked about the moratorium, and Counsel McGivern, how we can get through that, you know, because of the, we can't get a lot of new houses online, new businesses online. And this has to go through a process that's going to take about a year, year and a half. It has to go through DEP and Mass Utilities, and just the project to put that tank. And there was a spot in it out in West Hoyok for this tank up in, I believe it's Mulder Road?
Yes.
And Counsel Bacon had stated, had some questions on this. And it's something that will definitely help our community. It's not going to be the end-all of having all this gas in our community, but it's definitely the step forward to try to help some of the businesses and help some of the homeowners that want to convert to gas to do that.
Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I've been strongly in support of this since I became aware that it was a possibility. And I've complimented HG&E and the team for reaching out to the neighbors out in Ward Five, so that they had all of their questions answered early in the process. So there weren't a lot of unknowns that leads to a lot of, I think, sometimes increased anxiety. So I think it was handled very well, and I look forward and hope the timeline is shorter than they think.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Ward Five Council's leadership on this, and of course Chairman Tomlin and the president for putting this forward. Really appreciate it. I don't think this is going to be a very simple, straightforward process. I think there's going to be controversy. But to know that the butters and the neighbors in Ward Five are on board, and the Ward Five Council got ahead of that, that is a major step forward. And, and to think that we're being held hostage, Mr. President, by budding communities, already have pipelines going through, they just won't expand from an eight-inch to a 16-inch pipeline. So what this alternative presents is liquefied natural gas being hauled on diesel trucks going through those same communities to be stored into a storage tank on Mulder Road to keep Hoyokers, the poorest community in the Commonwealth, residents and businesses, warm through the winter. warm through the winter. We're good to go in the spring, summer, and fall. We've heard that multiple times from the GNE, but the winter, not so much. So the GNE is taking the bull by the horns, doing the best it can to try to help businesses and residents. I'm sorry, the Long Meadow and East Long Meadow, et cetera, don't want to help the poorest community in the Commonwealth. Good for them. Good for them. So here's the alternative. A diesel truck with diesel fumes with liquefied natural gas being hauled through those communities. They would prefer that. Clearly, they prefer it, because they don't want to give any alternatives. So hold the city of Holyoke hostage. HG&E commissioners and the managers should be credited for this. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
I was just hoping that this resolution, Mr. President, if you could just make sure this gets quarterbacked over to our, their application, so that the people that are the ultimate decision makers on allowing this, which hopefully shouldn't be too controversial, although these things have a way of finding its way to be, that the people in authority will know that, you know, the local community wants this, very much so, for our 11,000 users, household users. Thank you.
Seeing no one further, motion is to receive, adopt, and approve the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 17E, command public service was referred from the mayor, appointing Mr. Espinoza, 79 Lynch Drive.
You want to take 17E and F as a package, Mr. President?
E and F, okay. So take E and F as a package, suspended rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So E is for the Soldiers Memorial, Commissioner of the Soldiers Memorial, and F is Historical Commission, and that would be Miss, Mister or Miss, Paulus, Paulus? Am I saying that right?
Paulus.
Paulus. So therefore, this would be receive, both are to give leave to withdraw, sorry. So for both E and F, motion is to receive and give leave to withdraw. Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, and the first one, Mr. Jesus Espinoza, has been trying to get on the Soldiers Memorial Commission for about four or five years. He finally got an appointment, but he's out of state now, so unfortunately. And we'll have to get somebody new for that. And Ms. Gabriella Paulus, I guess, I believe, the day before we're going to have the interview, backed out of it. So maybe a time constraint or maybe a work issue, she backed out. So those are the reasons for those to leave to withdraw.
Okay. So motion is receive, give leave to withdraw for both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There was no DJNR, no charter and rules, no joint committee, so on to motions, orders, and resolutions. 21, from myself, that the city engineer provide a final location for the speed humps on Bemis, and that's a ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 22, the police radar sign, and maybe the new one that we get, be placed on Bemis. So receive, adopt, and to the police.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Could I be added to both those orders? I'm very familiar with that area, up and
down that street, and in touch with some of the residents up there, and I'm sure Dexter Guest will be happy to hear that. We're working on that, that speed hump up there in that area, because that's, it's definitely, Bemis is definitely a cut-through street, and people are going up and down there pretty fast at times. You know, it's 20, 25, but sometimes they go a little bit. I'm not going to say they're going 50 or 60, but you're going 40, 30, 40 miles an hour, it's, people, a lot of kids up in that area, it's important. But we did have a sign up there, I think it might have been sometime during the summer going down Bemis. Very effective when you see those signs and that thing's flashing, you know, you're going 40 or something, you're supposed to be going 25. Those are, those are very effective, and looking forward to getting the new speed, speed signs, yeah.
All right, so 20, adding Counselor Tomlin to 21 and 22. But 22 is to receive, adopt, sent to the police. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 23 is that the legal department give an update on the Essex Building. So motion be receive, refer to legal.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You mean the old one, right, over here on that street, right?
Yeah, and they'll give an update on that.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot that in the president's report. I apologize. I did speak with legal. They'll do another executive session before the next full
November 1st?
November 1st, on all the legal updates that have been requested.
All of them?
All of them.
Or just the ones they want?
All of them.
Including?
All of them.
Yeah.
Hence, all, all means all.
What's the difference?
Okay, just making sure it's A with two L's.
Said it a few times, A-L-L.
Excellent, thank you. Won't we need a separate night for that?
Um, not really.
Make it 5:30 instead of 6:00.
No, actually.
We can leave before 9:00. Let's keep it going.
All right. So 24, we already did.
Yeah, thanks.
So that was approved.
Take a motion to receive, item 25, and pass the first reading?
A second.
25, motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. This is injured on duty, which would be Lieutenant Sergeant's Patrol, $26,671.69 to injured on duty, and that represents 12. So Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. The purpose of this transfer is when a safety officer, in this case, police, is injured on duty, we take the, what would be their salary regardless, out of the salary line item and put it in what is known as the injured on duty for accounting purposes and tracking purposes of salary being paid and at the same time, services not being provided because of the injured on duty status. I didn't have a chance to talk to the chief, but I will be reaching out to the chief to give us an update on, but most of these are not long-term, but there are a couple of long-terms in there, and find out what the status is of long-term and what's being done about that. But at this moment, I suggest we pass this this evening, because we're backlogging in finance, and finance is having trouble finding a date to meet.
So motion is to
Motion passed.
First reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk Coleroy vote yes. You're voting for the transfer.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote you approve that. 26 is the preservation
Make a motion that we receive and have a discussion about passing the first reading tonight?
Motion be received, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to suggest we pass this tonight. If anybody objects, we'll put it in finance and at the best we can get it out in the future. This is an ongoing grant that we receive. The increments come in in different amounts. This particular one is for $20,000. The match is 50%. The match is already funded through CPA, a CPA grant previously approved by CPA and by the city council. This is for the projects upstairs in this building, the stained glass windows. Information received is that this particular grant will advance two windows to completion upstairs. Bob Parent is the, you know, was the go-to person for the project itself. As we know, Bob is no longer with the city. We will get some updates, but I think, if I remember, the last time Bob was before us, he was over on the left-hand corner of the building over here, working his way down towards the, the Prue Building itself. But there's a lot of work completed, but still some work that is left to be done.
Anyone, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I usually like things to go to committee, but I think we're all so well acquainted with this ongoing project that I'm comfortable to move it tonight.
Anyone further? So motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk Coleroy vote yes. You're voting for the grant.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote you approve that one. 27, from Counselor Puelo, order that the chief of police provide a narrative describing what happened to the Gray Fort tourists that the mayor was issued. Please include any cost, insurance payouts, parties. So this would go to receive, sent to the chief, sent to public safety?
Public safety it is.
All right.
The auditor, too, I guess.
To where?
The auditor, I would think, would have.
And auditor. So chief, auditor, public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, I just, I want to, I just want to make a brief statement. I've been thinking about this for a little bit since I seen, we're over the agenda. And I have to, for the record, I want to state this, because when I decided to run in 2015 and I was knocking on doors, a lot of my constituents, our constituents, really cared about safer streets, speeding. How can we make our departments run more effectively to provide these services to our constituents, whether it's trash, you name it? I personally, since I've gotten elected, not once, not ever, have I ever filed an order that would kick someone while they're down or remind them of their past mishaps? Can you imagine how hard it was for me? Because growing up in Holyoke and walking by this building, I never thought I belonged. I never thought I would be in this group, in this body, never. Making decisions that impact our community, our Holyoke, our family. To see orders that attack, that question, that remind us, is just a horrible thing to do. I mean, what kind of person would file an order that would belittle and hold judgment to our fellow colleagues? Now, I may not agree with a lot of the things, or some of the things, that are said in this room. But please rest assured, I would never do that to any of you, regardless of whether we agree or disagree. And I just wanted to state that, because when I read these orders, it took a stab at my heart. Call me sentimental, but at least I hold love and respect for every single person in this community. Thank you.
Counselor Puelo.
Yeah, just really brief, Mr. President. I wish that speech would have been given a couple of orders ago, but moving on to my next order, please. Thank you.
So from Counselor Puelo and Counselor Bacon, order that all counselors update their current addresses with the administrator that appear on the website, that the legal department give their interpretation of Section 9. The voters of the city at large shall elect eight counselors at large, and voters of each ward shall elect one counselor per resident therein. Is the council seat vacated if the ward counselor is no longer residing in there?
Or legal?
Receive adopt, please, legal?
So motion is to
One second.
Well then, Counselor?
Yeah, yeah. I'm wondering if I can take 28 and 29 as a package and object to both orders?
Second.
And pretty much on the basis that they're pretty much a deflection and a waste of time, and not necessarily based on actual city business, but based on personal attacks or trying to deflect from other similar circumstances or situations that particular people are going through in the moment, which I do not want to speak on, because it's not up to me to speak on none of these matters. But at the end of the day, this has nothing to do with actual city business. This actually has to do with defamation of character, possibly, or coming after other people that possibly may have convictions on their records, like myself. But ultimately, yeah, I would like to, I object to the order, and I would like for both of them to be left with withdrawn, because at the end of the day, there is no actual, real city business being done with the both of them.
So motion was to take up 28 and 29 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 29, from Counselor Puelo, Counselor Bacon, that the legal department give their interpretation of Section 46 and provide an opinion on the conviction of incumbent of any of the offices of a crime punishable by imprisonment shall operate to create a vacancy in the office held by him. Does this apply to convictions on incumbents prior to taking office? So those are taken up as a package. There was a motion to, what was it again?
Leave to withdraw, on the objection of the
So motion was give leave to withdraw. Was there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Under discussion, Counselor Puelo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So this isn't an attack on anybody, and I think it's definitely not defamation, and it has absolutely nothing, it has everything to do with the council, excuse me. If there's people that aren't supposed to be on the council, and there's votes that are taken into account, people could probably sue again. And there's a lot of votes that are getting taken, and if people aren't supposed to be here, I mean, hello, nobody had any problem when I quote unquote wasn't supposed to be here. So I don't understand why all of a sudden we're upset about these orders that make perfect sense.
Nobody filed an order for you not to be here.
Counselors, got the floor, please.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, all this is asking for is a legal opinion. I don't understand what's wrong with a legal opinion when there wasn't a legal opinion in the first place for me. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would remind my colleagues that we have an active legal matter before us that speaks directly to Order Number 29, that was acted upon with no advice from legal to this council, that we have not yet received, which we are yet waiting for, which we understood we would have tonight, but now we will be getting on November 1st. I don't see a difference between getting it then or have gotten it tonight. I think we would have all benefited from an interpretation of the charter prior to any action being taken that led to every one of us being sued. So I think it is fair and good government to get in writing and on the table, what is our interpretation of our charter? What does it mean? Now, we have Cory laws in the city. We had an interpretation from our law department relative to vacating a seat, which the judge did not agree with. I would like us to have common understanding as to what the language in our charter does mean. Because based on what we know today, if you're not convicted of a crime, you can sit on the council. But that was not the common understanding. What I seek is common understanding. I've always stood for open government. I've always stood for open interpretation. I'm not going in the back room, but I'm very angry that we got sued because of what happened without counsel from this city council. So don't call these orders out of order. The actions that happened without consent of the council is what was out of order. Thank you.
Counselor Gibner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, just a point of clarification. I'm not really sure why this doesn't happen through the legal department. Why does it have to come here at all? It seems like this is something that has, I mean, doesn't have anything to do with me. The person who wasn't convicted is back on the council, so whatever legal matters are going on, I don't understand why they're not happening with the legal department and lawyers, because quite frankly, it's above my pay grade. I don't understand it, and I think it uses a lot of our time on things that we don't really understand. Thank you.
Counselor Malavales.
I just wanted to say, as far as the voting was concerned, like, I don't think we voted without thinking that we are no longer a 13-member council, so I just wanted to clarify that as well. If that changes anything to the voting comment. Thank you. But also, yeah, no, this is, should not be going to legal, and it's just a waste of time. Thanks.
Counselor Murphy Ramboletti?
I haven't talked tonight, so I just felt like maybe I should. No, I'm just kidding. I am just like gonna, I've said this before, I'll say it again. These could have been emails, and the fact that they weren't, the fact that they were filed as orders, is it feels spiteful. It feels, that's why it feels like an attack. That's why it feels like it's not a productive use of our time. And honestly, I feel like we've heard from folks about, especially Order 29, I mean, the conviction of any incumbent of any such office. The person, we all know the person that you guys are talking about. It's not a mistake. It's not. So that is a personal attack, and that's not why I ran for city council. I ran for city council to actually get things done, and I'm super, super, super discouraged by the way this council has been treating each other, by the way we treat the public, by the way we treat department heads. And just to be honest, I mean, this could have been an email. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Well, first thing I'll do is refer back to the rules. And admittedly, the timing of all of this is, I would be naive not to say, the timing of all this comes as a member is reseated on the board. And I'm sure if I was illegally removed from the board, I would have, you know, feelings of not being, you know, not feeling the love, shall we say, right? When you're verifiably removed illegally, and a judge has to put an injunction to put you back in your elected seat, admittedly. So, you know, before we get too high on our horses here about everybody's feelings, that occurred about, and has still been like, not discussed, okay? Never seen anything in 25 years, anything that looked like that. So that, I asked questions, I'm still at a loss. However, I, again, I would say, I would be naive not to say that, you know, is this looking like retaliation because of other things that happened? Perhaps. Nevertheless, when it comes to procedure, technically, a counselor is not supposed to just, on your own, send an email to the law department and ask for a legal opinion on behalf of the body. behalf of the body. Says the charter, okay? That's our rules. And again, if people are going to just, and again, I give points to the, you know, we got a lot of new counselors here, but the way this is actually supposed to work, if the council wants a legal opinion, it's supposed to file an order, and the council's supposed to adopt it, and you're supposed to request a legal opinion. Okay? Now, if that's not going to be our rules anymore, and we can just individually go ask for legal opinions on these questions, I'm with you, 100%, but I'm just letting you know, procedurally, folks are supposed to put in orders, and the body is supposed to ask for legal opinions on behalf of the city council. That's the way our system works, okay? That's what's required, um, those are the rules. Now, as far as these questions in and of themselves, you know, these, 28's been asked before, um, years ago, maybe the law department can rely on old legal opinions, uh, of these questions around residency. We've, we've had different counselors that we all know, of names that have been questioned to be residents or non-residents of the city, uh, or otherwise, and, you know, these things have been examined. You know, I'm of the opinion, people want to ask for legal opinions, go ahead, and the law department should answer any legal opinion within reason that, that has had. The council, on the other hand, could give these leave to withdraw, and not ask these, these legal opinions, but let's just be clear, you're not really supposed to, if your justification for giving leave to withdraw is that people can do this externally, then I'd like to hear from the president that we can, members can just direct ask the law department for legal opinions, if that's the new procedure. But historically, in my prior service, that was never allowed. And so, um, on these other questions, people want to ask about interpretations of these various sections of the charter, how else do you get a legal opinion unless you file an order to, to get them? In fairness to these folks, um, that have asked these questions, what's the other procedure? I'm unaware of another procedure, other than filing an order and asking these questions. People may not want these questions asked, but if you, I think at that point, you have to ask yourself, if you don't want these questions answered, why don't you want them answered? Okay? Why don't you want them answered? I hope, you know, I'll just leave that as an open question. And, um, but bottom line is, this, like I said, this is supposed to be the process, so, um, in fairness to these individuals that ask these questions, that is the process.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Counselor Jordaine made a very good point, that it could seem that the counselor, or that one of the counselors within this body felt either attacked, left out, so then, and the timing of it all, and if we're reading this, these orders, it would look like some kind of retaliation. I'm angry, you didn't side with me, you didn't blah, 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 and then all of a sudden here, I'm gonna write this to get back at you. And the difference between, you know, here's how I see it. I did my things in the past, by the way, over 21 years ago. I did my time. I've corrected all my wrongs. I pay my taxes, I've put myself through college, I busted my back to make things right. So the difference here, it says it. Does this apply to convictions of incumbents prior to taking office? That is directed at people such as myself, and my fellow colleague here, Counselor Rivera. These are malicious. These are a waste of this body's time. We have so much to do in this city, and if we keep doing this to ourselves, actually, no, I'm not gonna say we, because I'm not part of this, right? Um, I don't file orders like this to take little jabs and stabs at, at people in this body. I don't do that. I try to work with you, and again, whether I agree or disagree with you, I work with you. I would never do this. This is, this is, this is a new level. This is like Game of Thrones kind of stuff here. This is not right. And the reason why I didn't say it earlier, because as I'm reading, I'm like, it was a smack against my face, so if that answers your question, that's why I didn't mention it earlier, but rather, whether I mentioned it earlier or now, I'm mentioning it, because it needs to be addressed. I was born and raised in this city. I will fight for this city to the end. I will make sure I point out the wrong, and I'll keep doing it till my very last breath. This needs to stop, and I hope that every person that goes out there and vote, like, are, are listening tonight, share this, please, share this with everybody in Holyoke. What is our city counselors talking about? What are they doing? Oh, are they lowering or raising our taxes? Are they keeping our, our streets safe? Are they making sure that the departments are, are fully staffed, that, that they're taken care of? Our Holyoke Police Department, are they staffed? Are they taken care of? Our fire department, are they staffed? Are they taken care of? No! We're writing, we're filing orders to take a little jab at each other, to remind us of our mistakes, to kick us while we're down. That's what these are for, clearing day. So stop making it what it's not. That's what it is. It's intended, intended and malicious. Intended and malicious. Retaliation, and that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish I'd heard a tenth of that passion in defense of due process for each and every American, as each one of us is sitting in this room, when we had two police officers in the chambers to keep a duly-elected counselor from entering the chambers based on actions, uh, 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 based on actions not endorsed, not even known by this council. That is, none of us knew. That is my whole point. That is why we were supposed to address this in executive session, but we did not do that as we were told we would do tonight. Now, there is a distinction with absolutely no difference in my mind, that we're gonna talk about it on November 1st, but we couldn't talk about it on October 18th. Hence the orders, hence me signing on to it. Don't talk to me about how unfairly somebody is being treated, when somebody who's accused not even had a trial, doesn't meet the bare minimum of our legal due process. This is what's called a modern-day lynching without the rope.
Stop, 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 stop.
No!
The counselor has the floor. The counselor has the floor.
No! I've listened to everybody respectfully. I have not interrupted a person, I've not made a face, I have not otherwise objected. But I do object when counselors, in certain cases, on their very own, bring up at meetings their record. I have never personally brought up at any meeting anybody's record, but what I do want clear is from our legal department, who took an action based on their interpretation of our charter, which was found not to be correct, I want the rest of the questions answered, so that we will be solid and standing on solid ground going forward, and we won't have to worry one way or the other. We will have the question answered. The question, as a theoretical, could potentially happen to anybody sitting in this chambers if something happens and the person is convicted of something. So I think we need to understand, if that happens, then what happens next? Maybe it's nothing, maybe it's something. It's a reasonable question, and the compassion for people who have done things wrong, paid their price, and redeemed themselves, and participate in a constructive way in society is fine, so is asking a question about what the repercussions will be based on the actions that just happened. These are reasonable questions. You don't like the timing? I get it, but if the interpretation of what vacating a seat meant had been provided to us prior to the action being taken, maybe people on this council would have been able to bring the questions to light, and maybe the whole entire thing would have been avoided. But we did not get the advice of council. I heard nobody in this chamber object when Counselor Givner filed the order seeking the resignation of a counselor because he had been absent. That was sent to legal for the legal opinion. Our president was quoted in the paper that legal would be giving us an opinion. The next thing we knew was the action had been taken, without advantage or advice from legal to this council. That is why I signed on to the orders. I'm not out to get anybody. The counselor that always talks about being a felon brings it up at every single meeting. I don't bring it up. The counselor brings it up himself. So, you know, that's not the issue. The issue is, what does our charter say, and what does it mean? Thank you.
So, Counselor Puelo wants to speak for a third time. Motion would be suspend the rules, I'll first speak for a third time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Counselor Puelo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to say, a lot of the points that I was gonna make have been made, um, and, I mean, just to be very brief, this is the process, and I'd be willing to suspend the rules, ask legal if there's another process that I can take to get legal opinions, but this is the process, and to my understanding, that's what I followed. And, you know, again, this can apply to me in the future, or anybody else in the future. This isn't an attack on anybody specifically. If somebody's convicted in the future, and they want to run for city council, they have a right to know whether or not they can sit on the council. I think it's a very good question to ask. And, you know, just the last thing I, I want to say is just, the hypocrisy on, by some people is just unbelievable.
Next is Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. Um, a couple of points that I kind of feel like I need to clear up. The fact that since, uh, since I've won this election in November, uh, I don't recall the council filed an opinion for my situation where I had to resign. I honestly don't recall the council filing an opinion, uh, a request for an opinion for that. I don't know what the process was there, but I don't recall the council requesting an opinion piece from the law, from the law department on whether or not I could serve while working for the schools. I do not remember a city counselor that put in the order for that. I don't remember the meeting that it happened. I believe Terry Murphy took it upon himself because of a quest, because of a, now sitting counselor had asked this to come up at the time. That's what the acting mayor, Terry Murphy, had told me at the moment, when I asked him, why is this coming up? So there is another way. It's not just following orders. I guess you guys are, veteran counselors use mechanisms here to their advantage because they know how to, because they've done it for so long, and that is very unfair. It's cool that you know it, and it's cool that you guys have that advantage, but it is unfair to the city, and it is unfair to the community overall, that you use these, these mechanisms as power tools in your toolbox to try to make sure that you can keep order the way you want to keep it here. That's the first piece, right? The second piece is, right, so much here, bro. I had to resign from a full-time position to keep my seat, bro. I've been getting attacked since day one, and you're telling me that this is not an attack? Whether I recite my personal record, that has to do with me, has nothing to do with anybody else. You don't, you don't have the right to do that. Nobody else has the right to do that, only I do. And I use it because I use it to help build up my community, because like you guys often so mentioned, that we are a poor community, and poor communities face a lot of the strife that I faced as a youth growing up. Yeah, I went to prison for five years. I came out, I also went to HCC, Holy Community College graduate, y'all failed to mention that. UMass graduate, y'all failed to mention that. I'm going to Westfield State to get my masters, y'all failed to mention that. From day one, I've been getting attacked. Day, month after month, order after order, there's orders that are in ordinance that they still have not brought up, because they do not want to bring it up, bro. But you're telling me I'm not being attacked? I'm not being attacked? What happened for me, in my cases, happened 10 years ago, almost, more than that, 2006, 2007, the article that someone supposedly found, 2007 article. It's not an article from 2022. It's not a 22, 2022 article. It's not a 2021 article. It's not a 2019 article. I'm not hiding anything from nobody. I'm telling people straight up to their faces what they expect when they vote for someone. I'm not hiding it. I'm not lying, I'm not cheating, I'm not stealing, I'm not putting another case on top of another case so that I can get out of something. That's not what's happening here. There's none of that here. This is straight, honest. I took my five years, and I ran with it, I did my time, and now I'm here. As an honest citizen, that pays taxes, that no longer lives in subsidized housing, that no longer has food stamps, and has to pay everything out of his own pocket. So I don't understand what the situation is here. Why? Because somebody got in trouble, and they got caught, and now they want to throw everybody else under the bus? Is that the issue? Because what it sounds like to me, right, the opinion was given because someone was doing their job, and you guys are upset that they were doing their job. I don't understand that. Like, if there's a lawyer, the law department is supposed to do the, their job to the best of their abilities. I don't understand why it's an issue for them to do their job to the best of their abilities. And now you have to expose other people because you feel like it's fair for someone else. Well, you know what? I've been on this on my own the whole time. You guys could team up, do what you guys want to do, visit each other and be best friends. That's awesome. But I'll still be here, and I'll still be trying to fight for my community and do what's right, whether you guys believe it or not. You can have 20 years in office, 15, 1, 2. The moments I've been here, there've been more people watching these council meetings and actually paying attention than they have their whole career, for some of you guys have ever been here. That's just facts. It is what it is. Again, my motion is to object to the consideration of the orders that were placed, the 28 and 29, not because I'm hiding anything. If you guys want, you can do a Cory Sori, whatever the hell you want. My stuff is not gonna pop up on a Sori. So just, trust and believe. Do what you need to do to make sure that you're voting for the right people, because I respect that. You should be voting for the right people, and you should know who you're voting for from the beginning. This is why I knocked on doors and led, led with what I am and who I am, so that the community knew what it was, and so that the people in the, of the city of Holyoke could understand that residents here can change their lives and become something different. I'm not supposed to be in this seat, but I am, and there are people that are upset. Thank you.
So, seeing no one further, uh, with regards to law update, as was mentioned, legal wanted to do the executive session tonight for what we did discuss, we'll bring it up because it's the executive session, and it almost took the entire time. Knowing that, that's why they asked for the second session. So that's where you'll get the updates on everything else that was asked. Uh, for process, it is true, you have to file for a legal opinion, which in the process would be to receive and refer to charter and rules, because it's a charter and rules issue, and then you'd take it up there when you get the legal opinion. There are also the processes, you can make the motion as the counselor has made. So these are the processes that are out there. Counselor Jordaine.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think the president's right. Um, we can not ask for the legal opinion, which everybody's within their right to do that, or we can ask the legal opinions. But I just wanted to be clear, it isn't that we're not asking the legal opinion, or these two individual counselors, there isn't some third process. I just want everybody crystal clear that it isn't, oh, well, you just send them an email, and, you know, you could have handled this on your own. That doesn't, that's not legal. As far as what Terry Murphy did, there's an exception for Terry Murphy. He was the mayor, and as the mayor, he can directly ask the law department for legal opinions. Just so we're on, all on the same page as to what the process is here that you're supposed to follow, so we can not, or yes, to get these legal opinions. That is on its merits, up or down, but I think the president got it right as to what the procedure is. Thank you.
All right, so, motion on the floor is to give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Say the noes have it. Motion would be to-
Roll call.
Uh, one, one roll call, two more?
Roll call.
Two, three?
Yep.
All right, three roll calls. The clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting to give leave to withdraw.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Almond?
No.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Bergo?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Poello?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Seven ye six knees.
So that was close. So seven, six, it is leave to withdraw.
Okay, moving on.
I think we're number 30, Mr. President.
All right, hold on, let me get there. Thirty, from Counselor Poello, Counselor Bacon, order that the...
I'm going to take up 30 and send it to charter and rules.
Okay, hold on. Recall provisions to be established for every elected official in the city. So that would go to charter and rules. All those in favor? All opposed. Thirty-one from Counselor Poello, that a flashing signal be installed by the fire department at Springdale and Main for the crossing to the park. That would be receive, adopt.
Fire and DPW.
Refer to fire, DPW.
Public safety.
And I'd send it to public safety to get an update on it.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two from Counselor Rivera, that the city explore using cannabis impact fee funds to improve sidewalks on Main Street, Bridge Street, North Bridge Street, sorry, and Lyman and Center Street. Motion be receive, refer to the mayor?
Yeah, and public safety if possible, just to have a conversation.
So send a copy to the mayor and then to public safety to follow up on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thirty-three from Counselor Rivera, that the city engineer and the DPW, and/or DPW add Willow Street to the list of sidewalks to be redone. That would be receive, adopt, send to city engineer and DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-four from Counselor Rivera, that the city engineer and/or DPW add Gate Street to the list of sidewalks to be redone. Once again, receive, adopt, send to engineer and DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thirty-five, same request. It'd be Saint Jerome, so receive, adopt, send to DPW engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thirty-six from Counselor Rivera, that the Park and Rec and DPW give an update on the project remodeling Springdale Park, so want to send that to public safety?
Public safety, yeah.
So to public safety with a copy to Park and Rec and DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thirty-seven, that police department provide an update on what steps and systems are in place to ensure spots, shot, spotted, that's a tough one, will work effectively. So that would be to public safety.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thirty-eight from Counselor Rivera, that the disabilities commission come into the public safety to explain the process of applying for a handicap sign. So to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thirty-nine from Counselor Bacon, modify rule 6D to add the use of profanity is prohibited and a member will no longer be permitted to speak on questions, debate. So that'd be charter and rules.
Mr. President, before we refer, can I just say one thing? I've been dying to say it all day.
Counselor Malavalez?
Whiffle waffles.
Whiffle waffles?
Thank you.
All right, so it's...
Mr. President, can I be added to that, please?
Adding Counselor Poello. And this is to charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, can we take 40 and 41 together as a package, please?
Motion to suspend rules, take up 40 and 41 as package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. From Counselor Bartley, I'm both. The 40 is DPW mayor, relevant city officials, appraise the city council on the recycling program. And then 41 is with regards to the Hoyok solid waste trash disposal efforts.
I'm just going to make a motion, I'll make a quick comment. Motion is to receive and adopt and refer.
Receive, adopt, refer to the mayor.
Yeah, I think I put them in there. Public Works Mayor would be good enough for right now, just so I get probably a city auditor too. So, and then I just want to, I was grateful that this was brought to my attention by a colleague. I'm just stunned if there's any accuracy to it, but I guess we're going to find out. So relative to our recycling program that a lot of us worked on for a lot of time, so we're going to hear some statistics, I hope, about solid waste and then recycling in this city. And I hope that, I think there's an order, I think Kevin has one in...
Yeah.
Forty-two, and once we get this data and I let it be for 60 days for the president, so it's not a rush, but hopefully when the data comes in, we'll have a chance to digest it and then have a committee report down the road. That's what I want to do, whether it's in EGR or public safety or finance, whatever it might be. But I want to certainly see what they have to say about our, the afforded programs. Thank you.
Mr. President, would it be helpful to bring up mine at the same time because it's on a related topic?
Which one?
Forty-two? Forty-three?
Forty-two?
Forty-three on the agenda, but I guess 40 and 41, there was a duplicate there, so...
No, no, they're not.
Wasn't?
No, they're different.
No, no, one's recycling, one's solid waste.
Ah, you are correct. I stand corrected, there's a word change there, yep.
Yeah, from Counselor Jordan, 43 is recycle materials facility. So similar, so take up 40, 41 and 43.
As a package.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So...
We're doing what? The mayor, DPW?
So motion is receive, adopt, send to DPW mayor, auditor.
Auditor. And then we're going to have a copy back to what, public safety, I would say?
I just want to get a communication of 40 and 41 for right now.
Okay.
So 40, 41, a communication, 43 to public safety.
Well, I'd like, I'd like the report, if we could refer it to them, but ultimately...
Well, you're going to get a report on 40.
I'd like a copy to go to public safety because I'd like to have, be able to have a meeting in public safety to discuss the results of the data.
Well, that's why I'm saying 43 kind of encompasses both. It takes on both. So we get 40, 41, get a communication, 43 goes to public safety and the communication will be received there as well, so.
Okay, but I do ask some additional questions.
That's why I'm sending yours to public safety for more.
Okay. They're going to get it though, to answer those first?
Well, yeah, that's why all of them are receive, sent to DPW, mayor, auditor. Forty, 41 will be a communication, 43 will go to public safety to get everything done.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Forty-two from Counselor Givner, with community support, order that the increase of trash can minimal to 50 gallons pick up service. So this would be to, two ordinance, copy to health department and a copy to DPW.
Send it to the union as well.
Yeah, I think there's a, they have a, the union has a 35 gallon weight limit on the two, so we'll have to, I'm sure the law department will advise us on that.
I was almost going to say it should go to public safety because I think that's why there is a weight limit.
Was it?
Maybe public safety.
Does it require an ordinance change if you go from 35 to 50?
I don't believe it's an ordinance. I think it's an agreement that they have because of the weight.
I was told by DPW it was an ordinance that has to be changed.
Okay. All right, so, hold on, hold on.
But I would take it to public safety first just to hear it out and then send it back.
If there is, then, yeah, okay.
Before we all go crazy here, how about we?
Send it.
Send, send it to public safety, copy to ordinance. Whatever happens in public safety, we can send it over and they'll have it. That's normally a procedure we do.
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Forty-four, from Counselor Malavales, Counselor Givner, order that the city council add a select battery storage facility in the zoning ordinance. So that would be to ordinance?
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We do have some late files. Don't run just yet. From Counselor Bacon, order that when ballot drop boxes are used in an election, live streaming cameras shall be placed 24/7 to prevent any irregularities. So this would be to...
Receive, adopt and send to the clerk, please.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to the clerk. All those, Counselor McGivern.
Is there a class associated with that?
A what?
Cost.
If I may?
Counselor Bacon.
It's my understanding that the police department can install cameras without special order or needing an appropriation. I guess the mayor would have to confirm that.
Actually, now that I think about it, it's a late file, so you'd have to suspend rules, take final action.
I would ask that the rules be suspended and I will apologize for it being late. I had an error in the address. I sent it timely, but I had looped it back to myself and studded to the clerk, so that's why it became a late file.
All right, so motion is...
These things happen.
So suspend the rules, take up final action on A. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Which then, as Counselor McGivern asks a question, so you can debate it now.
I just, under discussion, if I could, I just curious if there's a class associated with this and what the cameras are going to be looking at.
So you can say motion, receive, adopt, send to the clerk with a report back because you're saying the police said they could do it.
Well, that was my understanding in a conversation on a separate matter with the mayor.
Well, we'll find out. But if it comes back that there's a cost...
Yeah, I'm sure she'll let us know.
Yep.
Right. And the reason I'm asking, I'm not sure the state even requires the use of the drop box, but I don't think the clerk had had a chance to find the answer to that yet. So that's just in case. Yeah, thanks.
Maybe I don't understand the process, but the drop box is where?
At, they're sharing it with the collector's office, is my understanding.
Out back.
And you want a camera on the drop box?
Right. Just to be sure that things aren't being put in there that shouldn't be. Like we do in other areas of the city for safety.
Can I say something quickly?
Motion is suspend the rules. All the clerk, all those in favor?
I just have a quick question. When you say things aren't being in there that shouldn't be, what are you referring to, like?
Anything. Are you... Because it's not like a mailbox, you know what I mean? It's not protected like a mailbox is protected.
Vandalism or...
From that perspective.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, so motion...
I, without answers to my questions, I'll be voting against it, Mr. President. I don't think policing people by camera on a drop box, you know, for this purpose, you know, is something that I can support without more information and some more thoughts into this. I don't know why you can't call a committee.
Want to send it to finance or...
Sure. And if I could just ask another question of the clerk through the president, I don't know if she was able to find out if the drop boxes are required by the state since the mail-in ballots are free and there's early voting. So are we required to use a drop box?
We're not required to have them by law, but they're highly recommended by the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, so I just...
And they, they're actually like utilized by a lot of residents. I think residents prefer to put them in the drop box. They feel safer putting them in there than sending them through the mail, just because the mail has been a little bit on the slower side since Counselor Tomlin retired, so. So, yeah, we, people use it. We check it multiple times throughout every day and I would, I would not want to not use it, so. I mean, I can certainly look into it, but we don't have surveillance cameras on every mailbox that's around the city either, so.
No.
And, and there's no way that anything fraudulent could happen with ballots in there because everything that's taken out of the drop box has already been scanned out of my office and then it has to be scanned coming back in. So there's no way that we could accept any sort of duplicate ballot or even if it was accidentally something from another community. If we were to scan the barcode, it would show that it wasn't a registered voter in our community. So there's a lot of systems, a lot of procedures in place.
And if, and I have no question at all about the internal controls in your office, but there have been things over the years that were reported to me of people bringing in bunches of ballots for others and things like that. And I think the unattended drop box, you know, at night lends itself to that. And so I just want to make sure that we're keeping the integrity of the elections, which have been very good in our city.
Right, no, I agree.
So that, and that's the only place that I'm coming from. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
My, I guess, Brenna, where I'm coming from is, yes, the multiple ballot thing, I could see that maybe being an issue, but I was more concerned about, if you have a mailbox, it's not as much of a target potentially for vandalism. I guess I would be concerned about, like, if somebody knows it's a drop box for ballots, either they could break into the box or they could throw something in the box and light it on fire or put something on the ballots or some do damage to the, like, how do we protect the, from vandalism and being able to catch somebody that would vandalize the drop box? Like what, what's, like, because I'm not worried about during the day, you're getting them, but like, 2:00 in the morning, some knucklehead goes over and throws something to, inside the box to burn all the ballots. And then now we've disenfranchised somebody who voted. And now we're trying to figure out who the heck even dropped their ballot off, right? At that point? So like, how do we protect that? I mean, that's what, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this late file, but I'm just, that's just off the top of my head. I was kind of curious what your thoughts are on that.
I mean, I definitely understand where you're coming from, but, I mean, someone could go throw a lighter or whatever into the, and burn the thing up and run away, and even a camera is not going to stop them from doing that. I know on Halloween a few years back when we first got the drop boxes, I think there was something, I don't remember if it was statewide or if it was just in the city with the local scavenger hunt, but we were recommended to lock it, so we were able to do that. We kept it locked overnight, so nobody could put anything into it just because of the fear of that. But I certainly don't want to lock it every night either because I feel like after hours is when a lot of people do...
Right.
Put them in there, so. I mean, I guess there's really no easy answer to it, for sure. I mean, if, you know...
Could we put it, is it, I'm with you too, by the way, I like the fact that we have a drop box because I agree with you. I'm just wondering, is an unattended spot all by itself behind City Hall the spot to have it, or should it be maybe something where there's people going more by or a place that's maybe more monitored?
We've actually talked about that in the office. We actually, at one point, you probably all remember, had our own drop box, but it started leaking, and so obviously we can't have a drop box that's leaking because then it's gonna ruin ballots. So we had it taken out. I can certainly look into see if we can get some funding to get another one because one of our ideas was to actually have the drop box in the front of the building, and of course, High Street's a lot busier, 24/7 than the back parking lot, so that might be another alternative to look into as well. I don't know how quickly we'd be able to get one, especially with the DPW understaffed